Call this meeting to order.
Drive, pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Thompson. Mrs. Moore, here. Mr. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Bitner.
Here.
Ms. Wong, here. Mr. Lunder.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of council for May fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I suppose in spelling errors only, which I throw in corrections for earlier.
Yep.
Nothing substantial.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Lunder, seconded by Mr. Bitner. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore.
I'm staying.
Okay. Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Bitner.
Aye.
Ms. Wong.
Aye.
Mr. Lunder.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye. Correspondence clerk, is there any correspondence this evening? Does any member of council have correspondence this evening? Hearing none. We'll move on to administrative and department heads reports. Mayor and safety director, Mr. Eva, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Johnson and the council of the public here this evening. First off, in the fire department, we will be hiring two part-time firefighter EMTs. Nathan Bertley and Jared Frager will start with us sometime in the near future. Also, I gave council, this was in your mailbox, I handed it out prior to today's meeting, I don't have electronic copies of this yet, but we will get it. This was from Ms. Martin and I, we're at the Lake County Budget Commission Meeting on May sixth, at the Auburn Career Center. This included mostly all Lake County mayors, managers, some council people. The the attachment, talk a little bit about the alternative formula for Lake County. There was, Lake County mayors and managers subcommittees put together, they come up with that. Basically, Lake County has been operating under a formula based in nineteen eighty-two. So some many years ago, this formula was put together. It was reviewed and the allocations that are in the legal side schedule then shows what we'll be getting in two thousand twenty-four compared to up to two thousand thirty-four. What this schedule projects is a two percent increase in local government funds from twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty-four. If you look at Meadowon Lake, come schedule, we're relatively flat through the whole process. But really the hit, the deduction is being felt by the western Lake County cities will be Willwood and Wicklow. This right now is there'll be an ordinance put together by Chris Gallois in the Lake County Auditorium Office. And it looks like we'll need the legislation approved potentially June, July. And when the legislation comes out, they've asked us to be no revisions to the legislation. So it's either going to be a yes or a no by each and every council to approve the new formula that's going to go forward, starting in twenty twenty-five. The other piece of information came from the governor's office. And it had to do with regulation that casino gaming and still base amusement machines in Ohio. I won't read the whole thing, but really comes down to the second paragraph. The commission recently became aware of a news article and I think that the city of Wicklow has passed an ordinance to allow internet cafes to operate in the city. The article goes on to mention that Wicklow's decision was made after consultation with Willwood, Peace Lake, Meadowon Lake, and will be hills, other cities that allow these types of businesses to operate in their jurisdiction. Basically, it's asking costs, it's more like city council, probably work with Mr. Lyons to make sure that our ordinances align or do not cross over or or get in the way of Ohio's law. So I would ask, if you're at the right time, council maybe set up a committee maybe for something. That concludes my report tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Ray Director, Mrs. Martin, good evening.
I want to say to now that we kind of both had administrators, since I'm trying ice and she was starting with you.
Thank you. Law Director, Mr. Lyons, good evening.
Good evening. President. I also working in a cafe with entitled full permission letter. And my best knowledge, what our ordinance would say is they are probably stating it. But they don't mention it here other than mentioning like their section or the code. And how complex it is, it is. Internet cafe are illegal. What I mean by that, if somebody wants to have a place that people can go, look at a computer, look at wheels spin, they're allowed to do there. Where it becomes illegal, but there are payoffs. Payoffs are illegal. And my best knowledge, our ordinance doesn't authorize payoffs over and above the state law would allow it to take. And now it's given here. Whether or not the machine is skill-based machine where you could actually, I did pay people for some sort of skill. Is what the companies that promote these machines keep saying that they're not based on chance, they're really not gambling. It's all based on skill. So with people that have these operations want to take the chance to violate the law and that the state Casino Commission Police, an agency of the state that all the regulators that want to come in and investigate them, think that they have a case, then you can have that. Our police, I guess, could probably go in, but everybody knows who our police are. So if there is something that is not according to the exact letter of the law, they probably wouldn't be able to take it, like obviously normally that's done in the United States. Going back fifteen years ago, maybe when the ordinance was passed, I thought that council, the administration made a pretty valiant effort to try to put in a system, you know, where they had to get it certified, if the machines that were in there, you know, were not gambling machines. I think since that time, and this came up recently, when I say recently, six months ago, if somebody wanted to come into the city and open up another internet cafe, and we said, well, that's okay, but we want to get from you guys the state certification by a casino control condition that didn't exist at that time, that the machines that you're going to be using there are illegal. Unbelievably, you know, it happened that the person didn't come back, came to that place, put it open. So as in all things, the city tried to follow the law, the best ability, but if council wants to take a look at what our laws are and see any updates, it would be that was a very long report. I won't, I'll try not to do that again. Okay?
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the administrations this morning?
I have a question. So I'm looking at the turnout that we received from the pistol thing, and I just want to make sure. So it looks like there is a decrease between twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and then it goes back up for twenty twenty-six. So I just want to make sure that it wasn't like a misprint or anything like that.
No, that, yeah. I, I do see that, that it's about four thousand, right?
Is this comparable to what we currently get from that? Is this similar weather and less than?
Yes. If you look at the twenty twenty-four, which is what's projected, you know, we're at about three hundred fifty thousand. And, you know, if you follow along, we really start to increase. If you, if you compare twenty-four, you know, and start looking at like twenty-nine and thirty, you know, we're here at three seventy-four, you know, we're talking about one point four thousand dollars, it's still corresponding, that's substantial. And then another thing too is the, the assumption of two percent increase a year. That may or may not happen, but it was easier to to make it consistent across the board, to be able to explain, you know, how, how each township or city, you know, was going to end up. And then at the end, if you look at the percentage of twenty twenty-four allocation in twenty two thousand thirty-four, you know, mostly everybody, I mean, there are a few, as I said, like the, the western city, you know, where, where their weight field is at ninety, and then will be Willwood, they're still well below that hundred percent threshold, but with, with the old formula, what was happening was the, the townships and, you know, for example, Madison, Concord, Teansville. For the longest time, based on this nineteen eighty-two calculation, they, they were growing population and things like that, but they weren't getting the, the local government funds, you know, to, to reflect that growing population. So this, you know, and I don't know, we spent probably two hours going over this. It really, everybody felt like this, this was the way to go.
Any other questions for the administration? None. We'll move on to board committee commission reports. The only one on the list was Citizen Advisory Committee. Ms. Thompson isn't here tonight to give a report. So we will hold that off until the next meeting. Were there any other boards and committees or commissions that met that aren't on the list? Hearing none. We will now go to open the public to speak. If you'd like to speak, please come to the lectern, state your name and address to the record. Again, it's not a back and forth with council, and there is a five-minute limit.
My name is Timothy Mel, seven four one five, Clark's Drive. Good evening, Mr. Lunder, Meadowon Lake City Councilman, Eva. I'm going to ask you for help with the colony of feral cats that is on Golden Run, that's near the Barksburg, Barksburg Street. So the current colony is not accurately being documented. I've actually worked with Meadowon Lake City cats at multiple times over multiple years, and they did get better, but there's still a significant amount of cats that are not registered. This morning, it was the most recent incident that I had with the community cats with a colony of cats, and one of the cats had jumped up to my ladder in the middle about six o'clock this morning and started to climb the screen. So from January through probably that one, I had had two and three times a week cats that jumped up out of the screen. I do have an indoor cat, which I have a cat on it, but I couldn't do anything about it. So at this point now, I have four different screens that I need replaced, most of them are already replaced. So I'm pushing hundred fifty dollars without screening. So now it's making me miserable. So I wish I'd say that that's the worst thing that's happened. So I've been very patient with the situation. I know that the cat's there, I know it's a movie that has them, and she had them getting better, with taking care of cats. But there is a history of the lack of the situation. I think that's happening again. So in the last five years, I, between myself, my father-in-law, and one neighbor, he'd actually picked up seven of their cats. One of the cats was crushed in front of my daughter, twenty feet away. I'd fallen out underneath the car and had gotten crushed. Last year, there was a litter of cats, all of them kittens, all of them had been killed, various memories. But we just find them exist possibly. I had been bitten by one of the cats about five years ago. I had a ketchik and cornish in it, and I didn't make sure I didn't have rabies. That was, that was not done. My dog was recently scratched, my, so my mom's dog originally scratched got an infection and I've got various different cat or that bills. In February, I had two cats in two different occasions get up in the night. Attic is actually December, about February, Trump Christmas. I had taken my ladder down from the garage, and the cats went up there, I did not know they were up there, and I heard them, but I could not get them out. Now I have people that are all over my attic, here and, here and even up there, it's not healthy. So it's just horrible to feel. All in my garage, I, I, very more times I walk out into my garage, there's a cat there, but it's not. I have a dog. I don't know what my dog, what will happen, if my dog is one of these cats. I don't know what kind of responsibility I'm going to have to have if the dog is after one of the cats and kills the cat. I don't know what that situation is going to cause. So now it's possible, all kinds of headache from me personally, I've been super patient, my neighbor less patient. And I, at this point, you know. I know I don't have any power over this, but I'm asking for help, figure this out. You know, we constantly have cats ran our house going into that, making our flower gardens, a kit, a litter box, vegetable gardens, neighbor also just spent two, between two hundred and thirty dollars on rocks, chained up their entire flower bed so they do not go to the bathroom, in their flower bed. So it's causing lots and lots of unnecessary problems for all the neighbors. I know the local neighbors that they hang the garden. It's just, look, it's just litter cats. So at this point, I think we've counted between twenty and twenty-five cats in the one colony. This week alone, there's four new cats that have come over, never seen them before, but now they're hanging around. I have personally worked with Meadowon Lake City cats, I've actually contacted her multiple times already this year, I've not been able to help to track the issue. Cats I know have not been the ears but, so. And I personally paid for, I think, six of them, neighbors have paid for additional four, and I know that we've caught well over a dozen cats myself. So I'm, I'm working program, program's not working, I'm asking back to fix it, change it, do something. Remember the amount of cats, I'm not naive, but we need cats. Right? I actually have a video of the cat jumping on my street. I also have a cat sit just a couple of mornings ago, just chasing them around, up my driveway. There's a benefit, there's a need for two cats to be around the neighborhood and get it. But twenty, twenty-five cats, it's excessive. It's not what this is for, it's not what this is supposed to play for. So I'm venue bleeding. We need to do something about the cats before somebody else does do something about the cats outside of that area. So thank you for listening to me. You guys have any questions? Hey, so afterwards, you guys have any, you guys have the, send videos, I actually sent a video of my daughter watching the cat get killed, shooting our Eva a few years ago. But so it's causing trauma right there. Can't do anything about it, if you guys can.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Paul Martin, seventy-five, ninety-two, Finkhurst Drive, in Meadowon Lake. Ladies and gentlemen of council in the city administration, I stand before you not as just a concerned resident, but a former member of city council. I have many concerns with the city as way of governing. The first is the public meetings concerning Loblaw. I think that the very generous offer to let the public have any input into what's going to happen in Loblaw after the renovation. In a meeting earlier this year, Councilwoman Moore claimed that there was indicative implication that she may have taken a bribe for a vote for the PUD and thus the high-density housing worth of property formerly known as Gravesboro. I am certainly not stating that I believe that she or anyone else on council would take a bribe for voting that way. However, the vote that did occur that night did not end in anything to disprove that. The majority of council voted for the PUD. During the same meeting, someone stated today in Fox that many people bought the proposed boundary development, and was told that these people did not believe in coming to the meetings to speak their opinions because nobody listened. Well, again, the vote by the majority of council proved them right that night. Council didn't listen to the people and took the time to be seen and heard at various meetings. There were many people, those, and many of them were branded as those Salida people, who spoke their opinions about this project. At one meeting, Mr. Harris or Mr. Wilhelm asked the audience and attendants to raise their hands if they did not live on Salida. Approximately half to one-third of the crowd in attendance raised their hands. They were not from Salida, and they were not for this proposed project. Okay? This discussion concerning this property went on for a couple of years, as you all well know, with many people voicing your opposition to the development. I can only remember two people in this entire time speaking in favor of the project. There were people who posted on social media that anything would look better than the abandoned homes and the poor conditions of that property had become. I find it sad that our city administration could not force a property owner to clean up this disorder. I also find it sad that the city rewarded this property owner by passing the PUD despite the fact that they were severely behind in their property taxes. Is that what we do in the city, reward poor behavior? Apparently it is. But this is not about that project. This is about the public hearing, the public meeting for Loblaw. It is about the fact that the city administration, the majority, majority of council do not listen to the residents. And it's common knowledge to all over social media, Facebook as well as Lakeview, that why bother coming down to say anything because you're not listening to me, you're not heard. My previous point, statement proved this point, and yet you're going to give the opportunities to public to speak about this party. Why should they offend? Well, personally, I hope they do. I hope you folks listen to it. Because it is not just your city, it's for the administration, it's everybody's city, and they should have input. Then one last topic I want to touch upon, that I'll let you get on to your meeting, and that is topic of transparency. Since the beginning of this year, getting copies of council agendas in the approved meeting minutes has been very spotty, if not existent. As of this afternoon, the agenda for this meeting has not yet been posted anywhere that I could find on a city site. Kudos to Councilwoman Wong for keeping people updated in her emails. However, open positions on commissions and committees are rarely posted for the public to see, for anyone to show any interest in it. Why are we asking the people, why are we keeping these people in the garden? There's a lot of things that people have no idea what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oliver, seventy-four sixteen, March fir Drive, good evening, Mr. President, Councilman McTrey. I just want to back off what my neighbor was saying previously, and I told about the feral cats, if you guys know, familiar face to this topic. We cannot stress it enough that we have done everything that our council monetarily, personal effort, and just, you know, patience as to dealing with this problem. And this lady on Golden Run feels like she's doing a great thing. Okay, she is. I'm not undermining the people that take care of these feral cats, stray cats, because they love to eat them. But she only cares about what's inside that, you know, a quarter acre or whatever she has. She does not care and does not know, she's completely oblivious to the damage that she's doing to the area. And the ecological system, birds, other animals in the area are not, should catch. Okay, I spend three hundred dollars on rocks. Every weekend, removing vaults, dirt, you know, the smell, replacing those rocks, only for that night to have a cat. Breakfast. Okay, just like, completely. Other neighbors have turned off completely our garden. I won't. I've spent almost a hundred dollars to make sure these cats do not get into my garden. I guess, well, they didn't. They get it. My dogs don't get into it, right? They're trained, they're domesticated. But some things have to give. And right now, the only thing that's giving is us, that you guys, thank you for something, because this is completely without reason. For five years, I've lived in Meadowon Lake for eight years. Ten years in the Marine Corps, and I come home. And, I mean, you know, if Widdow is a problem, that this probably is, but I just want to live peacefully. And my little property of Meadowon Lake, I just want to live peacefully. And I can't. We, we're going to pay for the rocks. I have to buy new furniture, cushions and stuff, my patio furniture, so, because they're in front of that. They sleep on it, they scratch it, they piss on it. Who's going to pay for that? I will. You know, I'll probably do it again next year. Please do something. Amend the ordinance something. This lady does not care. And she needs to know that we care about our property. Now, I'm not saying that she needs to stop. She, she can have her little cats, her few cats that she needs, that she wants to make herself feel. But we do know that she does have multiple, I mean, probably another cloud of cats inside her house. Okay, so why does she need to take care of the cats out? The attention needs to be brought to her, and it needs to be brought to the residents, to other residents, as Paul had discussed before the meeting started, that multiple residents on Lakeview, I'm not talking to me, I don't care about that, but other residents on Lakeview complain about this same issue. And unlike what Paul was saying, I hope I get heard. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No. What was your last name?
Oliver, L O R V E R.
Thank you.
Okay, I will close this portion, open the public to speak. We'll now move on to legislation for council. We're in summer twenty twenty-four dash O dash zero four. Can you please read it by its title?
Ordnance number twenty twenty-four dash O dash zero four, third reading, and ordinance amending ordinance twelve forty-two dot O five, certificates of occupancy, and declaring an emergency.
A discussion on this. There are motion on this.
Motion for passage.
Motion made by Mrs. Moore, seconded by Mr. Lunder for passage. Roll call please.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Gray.
Aye.
Mr. Bitner. Ms. Wong.
Aye.
Mr. Lunder.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye. Ordnance number twenty twenty-four dash O dash zero five, if you, if you please read it by its title.
Ordnance number twenty twenty-four dash O dash zero five, an ordinance providing the issuance and sale of three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds. One, to pay a portion of the cost of the acquisition and installation of the Lake Street Trunk Storm Sewer and all related expenses thereto. and all related expenses thereto. And two, to pay a portion of the cost of the acquisition and installation of the Pinehurst Street Trunk Storm Sewer and all related expenses thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Any discussion on this?
Is there a, um, timeframe that this needs to be passed?
Yes, June, June, now, now, two thousand and seven.
June seventh?
Mm-hmm.
So is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Wong, seconded by Mr. Lunder to suspend the rules. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Thompson? Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Ms. Wong?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lunder, seconded by Ms. Wong for passage. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Ms. Wong?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder? Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ordnance number twenty twenty-four dash O dash zero six, if you could please read it by its title.
Ordnance number twenty twenty-four dash O dash zero six, an ordinance creating new section, uh, two hu- two five zero point two three in order to require council to approve all reemployment of retired city employees and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'm gonna explain why I asked this to be presented for us to discuss. On February eighth, at the recommendation of the law director, Mr. Eva spoke to Vice President Thompson and myself and indicated an interest in allowing the retiree hiring of two employees. On February fourteenth, I informed the mayor in writing that after having learned from the retired service director that previously he had been told by the city that it was not supportive of what is often referred to as double dipping as a policy, I informed the mayor that without a written policy precedent establishes policy for given administration. Apparently, the mayor then contacted Mrs. Thompson to get her opinion, and she concurred with my determination. The mayor did not respond to the email and writing or verbally to contradict that assessment, and no further discussion ensued. Neither the mayor nor the administrative director brought up the per- the proposed retiree hire at the appropriations meeting that occurred after this discussion. Subsequently, it came to our attention that the mayor had indeed offered retiree hired to employees. I asked whether there was now a written policy establishing a retiree hire process since this has been inconsistent during his administration. The administration has balked at having a policy. I believe having in writing a clear policy stating retiree hire may be allowed at the discretion of the mayor is important. First, it establishes that there is no specific policy prohibiting it written or implied. Second, it establishes that the mayor is the ultimate decision maker on offering it. Third, it provides employees today and in the future a clear understanding of that process. A policy should clearly state the mayor makes the decision what occurs with vacation and sick leave, timing requirements so that may be appropriately reviewed and budget issues considered, and that the decision is made on a case-by-case basis and must benefit the city. Having a clear policy protects employees from the whims of administrations beyond the ultimate decision to allow or not allow retiree hire on an individual basis. It provides clarity not subject to individual interpretation. Why do I believe council should approve or disapprove an individual retiree hire? First, there is a cost to the city to allow this. The administration will tell you it saves us money. But this is only for a single fiscal year. Reality is, it costs us additional money because we pay out sick leave immediately upon retirement. But vacation is subject to interpretation as a state law indicates one thing and the city, as a charter city, can do differently. We should clearly establish in writing what it is so that it's consistent to all. When we pay out vacation at a later date, yes, we save money in the current year, but we pay out the vacation at the prevailing wage when the individual re-retires. That is at a higher rate than the current year. It also means we continue to pay a senior employee at a higher rate than perhaps a new employee would be paid. Requiring council to approve or reject the retiree hire ensures council has been a part of the budgetary considerations and have been reviewed and discussed, something that did not happen at this time. It ensures there is justification to the city to allow it, as there should be significant value to the city to provide this opportunity. Personally, I'm in favor of allowing senior employees to retire and be rehired because their experience and skills are often difficult to replace. It also allows the city appropriate time to transition employees into new roles and adjust staffing. However, it should be noted that there are many taxpayers who do not like the idea of government allowing double dipping, the act of paying out a retirement as well as their full salary. By having council approve the retiree hire, it ensures the elected officials are in agreement regarding the value provided the city in allowing it. Because the administration has balked at establishing a written policy, I believe it is also important that this body established by ordinance such policy so that we are clear and consistent to our employees regardless of administration. An employee hired today should be treated no differently than when they retire than an employee retiring today. It should be clear that the decision is on a case-by-case basis. Our employees deserve that. One must question why the administration doesn't want to provide our employees clarity and consistency of an actual written policy. This is why I proposed this legislation and refused to withdraw it at the request of the administrative director. I will always stand up for consistency and fairness to our employees and fiscal responsibility to our residents. And I would certainly hope that any mayor who rejects a retiree hire is open and clear with their rationale to that employee. I believe that every employee deserves that. Discussion.
As short of, um, an ordinance, would an offer of a written policy by administration remove the need for an ordinance?
I believe that the, I believe that because an administration can change a policy at any point in time, having it codified establishes for the long term. Because like I said, I believe an employee hired today should know what the policy is long term. It shouldn't be changed by just an administrative decision.
I weigh in on you.
Sure.
Question and answer. I believe, yeah, if council does not approve a policy, then it's clear that the policy could be changed without the approval. Uh, but if council would adopt a policy, you know, by the administration, you know, for this kind of a situation, uh, saying that council approves, you know, any type of rehire, rehire, so long as it follows this policy, then it couldn't be changed. It may, it could be changed, but then council could then impose rules. So I do think there is some value to having a policy, uh, approved by the council.
Anyone else?
Think about what the act will be. Maybe they're had sixty days noticed by the administration to change the policy, that type of thing. Otherwise, it's blanket refusal, something like that, you could say. But also, we still leave it to the dean, the administrative decision, where council would not get involved because council really has never gotten involved, you know, with who gets hired and who stays, if that's not a council bumping. If the council bumping, it's council, you know, which is providing funding, you know, for the administration for, you know, the various positions. So I just think that there is some value.
I, I will tell you, I'm not opposed to a policy. It was never an intention to keep any information from members of council. We've looked at different situations under different circumstances, okay? And in both of these cases, decided, I decided it was a benefit to the city and also for the employees to keep. Uh, Mr. Johnson, your point of, uh, letting employees go and then the process of hiring, training. If you think about hiring and training a dispatcher or letting somebody, uh, this did part of our finance department for over thirty years, to let her just walk away and try to replace somebody like that, it's not possible. I'm, I'm in agreement with Mr. Lyons. I'd be more than happy to have us write up a policy and, uh, with council's approval of the policy. And then if we would change the policy, we would let council.
Any other discussion?
I, I'm gonna weigh in. I I am in support of this policy. Because I'll tell you what. Four or five years ago, when Mr. Moore was talking about retiring, he approached the administration about retiring rehire and was told, no. The administration doesn't believe in it. This was shortly after all of these local cities in the area had been on the news for allowing employees to double dip. Administrations before supported it. I can probably give you a list of at least half a dozen people who have done it. He was told, no, this administration doesn't support it. Well, here we are, four or five years later, and it's happening. Your decision. Fine. But the way it was done after I sat in your office and had a conversation about open communication, being upfront and honest about everything, to find out this was done behind council's back, when you could have said, hey, you know what, we are gonna do this, because I'll tell you what, right now, I don't know what to believe that comes out of that table sitting over there. You want to talk about somebody who used to trust you and who used to support you? It was me. It was him. And to find out four years later, we have a change of heart for two employees, that's your decision and that's on you. But it puts a very, very bad taste in my mouth and now makes me question anything and everything that is presented to us.
Anyone else?
Motion for pass.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Gray, seconded by Mrs. Moore. Does it suspend the rules? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
No.
Ms. Wong?
No.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion for passage. I don't think we have it. It's four.
Correct. Really four. Go to that one. Motion fails. This will go on to second reading. Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash R dash nineteen. Could you please read it by its title?
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash R dash nineteen, a resolution confirming the appointment of Eugene Scott to the Civil Service Commission.
Any discussion on this?
Just when, second.
Motion made by Mr. Lunder, seconded by Mr. Bitner for suspension of the rules. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Ms. Wong?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion for passage.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lunder, seconded by Ms. Wong for passage. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Ms. Wong?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Old business. Is there any old business tonight? Hearing not. We'll move on to new business. Is there any new business tonight? Hearing not. We'll move on to open to the public to speak. If you'd like to speak, please come to the election station, name and address for the record, blah, 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 blah. Hearing not. We'll close this portion, open the public to speak. We'll move on to announcements and settings and meetings. Service committee, we're going to change that, I believe?
Yes.
Reschedule that?
Yes, um, Mrs. Wong, um, won't be able to attend tomorrow night. Anything that's really important that we have are there, um, as we discuss the legislation before the service committee, so, um, I'll probably reschedule that one. Well, there are three meetings that we following and, I'm not right, and three meetings that we after that. Yes, well, those are busy weeks, yeah. Let's see. Do we, uh, wanna work at like the weekend of June sev- week of June seventeenth? That's where we are, yeah. Mm-hmm. I'm, I'm okay, any day, all right?
Oh, okay. Calendar's fairly clear?
Monday, seventeen? Monday, the seventeenth, um, is six thirty still good? Yeah.
Service committee is now going to be Monday, June seventeenth at six thirty, yeah. We have Parks and Recreation meeting Thursday, May thirtieth at six thirty P M. We have Planning and Zoning meeting Monday, June third at six P M. Community Development, Tuesday, June fourth at six thirty P M. Is that still correct? Okay. Charter review, Wednesday, June fifth at six P M. Ordnance Committee, Monday, June tenth at six thirty P M. Going to also add in to you guys the review of the gaming ordinances.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Before you do that?
Yeah.
I don't want to take back one word that I said in my longer report. But I'm looking at the Casino Commission, and the Casino Commission says, very end. The commission looks forward to engaging in a dialogue with you regarding the issues outlined in this correspondence. If you would like to set up a meeting to discuss further, please feel free to contact the person. So I was gonna contact that person, send them our ordinance and say, please review and let us know what you think, and we would love to invite you to a meeting of the Committee of Council, the ordinance committee.
Okay.
Let's see if they come.
Sounds good?
Okay?
Yeah.
If I'll send that out.
Mr. Wong.
Pardon me?
Way to go.
Yeah, so I'll send that out this week or it could slip the next week, but it'll go out and I'll happy the president on it, so we know.
Thank you.
Action down at the Casino Commission, okay?
All right. Well, since the, that's not coming your way, the cats are. You can add that to your list of, uh, needy topics there.
It's going to be a lengthy meeting. We'll do it.
I mean, you know, you can always just cover what you can and then reschedule for the next one.
That's what we did last.
Yeah, I know. All right, uh, then the Lake Overlook Forum is Thursday, June thirteenth at seven P M. Next regular meeting, uh, the regular agenda meeting is June sixth at six P M. The regular meeting of council is June eleventh at seven P M. Anybody else want to schedule a meeting that we don't have on the calendar yet?
For your, uh,
Motion made by Mr. Lunder, seconded by Mr. Gray for adjournment. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Ms. Wong?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder? Mr. Johnson?
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.
I didn't catch it either. He's gonna give me the. Carrie?
I know.
And a jan, you can't, you know, it's like. Oh, yeah, great.
Administrator. Administrator.
I mean, I want.
Hi.
Aye.
So this, this. I was just. We do have.
That's all, yeah, it's complicated. It's very complicated.
I'm not just saying it. What are we, that's fine.
Don't you think? You guys want? Still confused.
Have something.
Oh, wait, sign the wrong thing. This one already come down.
Oh, we got much too many.
This one has to go back. We're missing second copy. Yeah, there's only one copy of this one, so. Oh, wait. Hey, yeah, okay, here's the other one. That's O five. We'll get it sorted. This is the other one of this. And I will forge my remark. You know, I think they're worth it.
Like I could like recap it, so you're like.
Just include it in its entirety. Okay, whatever.